So we'll call a meeting order at eight thirty A M and I will have Steve from Horizon's engineer to go to the pre-construction meeting. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, we're here this morning to do a contract signing and a pre-construction conference for the Moore Street water main extension. So I think maybe we can just start with introductions. Can we do that?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, hi, I'm Cara Rosak with Elevated Excavation.
I'm Tom Rosak with Elevated Excavation.
Steve McFence, Horizon's engineer.
Bill Renn, Selectman.
I'm Cheryl Burden, Selectman Woodstock.
Star very select.
Judy Walsh, administrator.
Kathy Riley and assessing clerk and.
And Mike is Mike Walsh back there. He's the director of public works. So he'll be working with them. And Harrison.
Harrison, new access utility engineer, District One.
Okay. So I have an agenda that I put together just to kind of keep us on track. So the purpose of this meeting is to try to introduce everybody, kind of coordinate the work, sign a contract, talk about work schedules, discuss administration of the project and bring up any items of concern before we get started, okay? So a notice of award was issued on May twenty third, twenty twenty five, so that's taken care of. The next order of business is to execute the agreement. So I have three copies of it. The idea here is the contractor walks out with one, the town keeps one, and I keep one for my records. So the agreement form is the one that appeared in the contract documents. I just filled it out with the proper amount based on the bid. And we also append the contractor's bid form to the back that has the unit prices on it. So what I'll do is I will give a copy to you to take a quick look at. I have three copies, so I need one back. But basically, there's a signature block for the town and a signature block for the contractor. So we'll execute three copies. And then make sure everybody gets one. So the language is the standard language that's in the contract documents. The only thing that I changed is to put in the amount and then obviously the contractor's name.
You want to be off three, off three covers times by all three?
Yes.
Hello. Who signs, who's signing which you?
Um.
Which I.
I think the four, yeah, make a motion for you to sign on their behalf.
Make a motion for them, Cheryl, sign them.
They're not a contractor.
All right.
You want me to sign this one or does it all?
Um, sure.
Oh, no, 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 are you saying?
Three of them.
Uh, no, just.
There's one, one person as a contractor. So you guys, or the one you can legally sign?
Yep.
Works for me. All right, so whoever signs it, one should sign all three, yeah.
All right, I should sign them.
There's one, execute a copy for you guys. For you.
But you, uh, yes.
All right, so Cara just provided the payment performance bond. There's only one copy here. Can you make two more copies real quick?
I can also email them to wherever you need them to go.
Um, no, that's all right. We'll just make copies. That way we'll spread them out and we'll be done. Two more copies of this? Actually, you don't, you don't need one, right?
No.
So one more copy.
One more copy.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so while Judy's doing that, we'll come back to the notice to proceed. While Judy's doing that, we can talk a little bit about some of the other things. So obviously, owners of the town of Woodstock, the owner's representative during construction probably be you, Mike. That's Mike Well, she's the director of public works. And his phone number and contact info is up here at the top, yeah? So that's his cell phone number, three, four, eight, eight, seven, eight, three?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you need to get in contact with Mike, that would be the best way to reach him. And his email address is right there. So the designated project representative for you folks is you?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to put his cell phone on here?
Yes, that would be helpful. Six oh three?
Yes, thank you.
Seven, two, three, four, five, four, two.
Did you hear that?
I'll get it for you.
I'm gonna, okay.
So the best email is the one I've been using, info@.
Yeah, okay.
And I can assume you'll also be doing the project management on this.
Yes.
And site superintendent?
Yep.
Okay, you're the one man.
The one and only.
Right, well, you know, that's good. Uh, site safety officer as well, I assume, right?
That's me.
That's Cara, okay. And all field personnel will be under your supervision?
Yep.
Okay, so as far as emergency contact, if we need to get a hold of guys, if there's a water main break or something goes on in the middle of the night, who do we contact? Uh, you can call me. The six oh three, seven, two, three, four, five, four, two.
One, two, three, four, five?
Four, two.
Four, two?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, my job here is, uh, I'm the one who did the design and I'm kind of responsible for it through the construction. So if there's any issue that's construction related that has to do with the engineer, I'm the person they should call. And my cell phone number is on the agenda as well. So if you need to reach me anytime, pick up the phone and call, okay? And let's talk a little bit about permits. We had a draft D O T trench permit that was included in the contract documents. We go through this process ahead of time so that we have approval for the design plans. And it also aligns what the requirements are for you as the contractor during construction. So there's no surprises. So there is a requirement in here, obviously, for traffic control. There's a bond requirement in here. Uh, this is only a draft. So you need to deal with Harrison's office to get the actual trench permit. And you really can't start work without that. So if you haven't already contacted them, you aren't doing that P D Q. There is a copy of this in the contract documents, but I have another one here for you. So. Good afternoon. And Mike, let me give you one of these. This is the draft permit, the D O T issue to the project. So what will happen is contractor will have to go through District One office up in Lancaster and actually get the final permit. It should be this permit, same, just not in draft form. So did you see this?
I haven't reviewed that. It's probably going to change because our system's online now, so.
Yeah. All right, what, do you want a copy of this?
Sure, I could have copied that in the meeting minutes.
Okay, sure, let me give her this now. While we're on the D O T stuff, I did want to share with you back some time ago, back in, uh, what's that, twenty twenty two? Man, time goes by. Three, four. When we were working on the design for this, um, I had a equal, several email exchanges, but I had one with Jim McMahon, who was the former assistant district engineer. And I just wanted to give you a copy of this. Basically, it points out who you should be coordinating with, as far as the traffic loop goes.
Okay.
So if you get into that detector loop, there's a guy named Peter Crouch, the Bureau of Traffic, and that's his phone number.
Okay.
So District One, I think, is probably your first go-to, but with respect to that traffic loop, they're going to refer to this guy. I'm just going to give you that so you haven't contacted them, okay? Straight here. Okay, we have two other permits. Um, they're shoreline permits. Anytime you do work within two hundred and fifty feet of a designated river, which the penalty is you have to get a shoreline permit. So it's really intended to ensure that riverbanks don't get disturbed excessively and that people don't clear too many trees or there's too much impervious area or it's worth that sort of thing. So in this particular case, we just had to get the permits because they were, we were two hundred and fifty feet from the river and we're also, we're proposing some work down over the, in the parking lot area. So on the plans, you'll see where we took out a piece of pavement, put it along and see. And the reason we had to do that was we weren't allowed to increase the impervious area. So when we put the pavement in for the new driveway, we had to take it out somewhere else. So, um, the only real conditions I think you need to worry about are basically, it says that you have to have construction fence around the perimeter of your disturbance area before you start. So what I would suggest is that you run some orange fence down along between the edge of where you're going to work and the river, just to meet that permanent condition. So there's two different permits here for the same thing for shoreline because there's two different properties. The town owns the parking lot and then the road going down over the hill is owned by a different person. So we actually want to get two different permits. So I'm going to give you a copy of each one, so the same permits still.
Okay.
There is a requirement, interestingly, on, only on one of them, on the second pair, you have to sign it and post it.
Okay.
So, um, you might want to put a board down there.
Yeah.
With your safety stuff on it and all your employment stuff and a copy of the permits, just so if someone were to come by, you've met the requirements in the permit.
Yep.
Okay. Let me give. The copies of these to you as well. Okay. Contract does have liquidated damages. What liquidated damages are is, say, you sign a contract and the contractor starts or maybe doesn't start, clock starts ticking, where did he go? How come he's not finished? So there is a clause in the contract that says there's forty-five days to reach what we call substantial completion. And the definition of that is that the project's been brought to a point that it can be used by the owner for the intended purpose. So that means different things on different projects, right? It's not a building, it's a water main. So what that means is that it's hooked up, ready to go. There can be outstanding issues like final paving or bombing and seeding or that sort of thing that brings it from substantial to final completion, but substantial completion rarely represents most of the project work. So there's forty-five days from the time we issue what's called a notice to proceed to reach substantial completion. If the contractor's not done within the forty-five days, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine per day for each calendar day that they don't meet that deadline. There are provisions in the contract for time extensions, change orders. So if something happens, that's illegitimate the way. The town would issue a change order for a time extension or a change in price, either up or down. So, um, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what that means. Um, I can say that honestly, in thirty-five years of doing this, I can only think of one time where that became an issue, but it is out there and it is something that, um, I want everybody to be aware of. So that probably leads us to a notice to proceed. So basically, um, we signed a contract today. What we want to do is pick a time, a date when the contract begins. So, um, the sooner the better, but, um, we also don't want to start until you kind of have things being ready. So have you given any sense to your schedule?
Well, the, um, the fourth of July coming up, does that?
We, we actually thought the end of August would be better.
Okay.
Yeah, we honestly just.
Is that, how does that work with your end of August good for you? Good.
Whatever they want to do it.
Well, our thought is, you know, we, that six weeks, seven weeks of summer, we'll end the third week of August, you know? So if you get through that without the whole park lot being screwed up, because the other exit, anyone knows it's dangerous, you know, it really is. It's it's almost a one-way, it should be a one-way road. And that's my thought. So, uh, if we have, I don't know how long you have to close that that street. So if it's a long time, if it's quite a while, my, my thought, and I'm talking to the business owners down there, is that's the biggest step. Either right after Labor Day or before Labor Day, perhaps it'll enough to use for the weekend and then continue for two or three more weeks before, which that would be ideal.
Does that work for you guys?
Wasn't what I was hoping for.
Well, it might, it might be a conflict of interest because we're bidding on a project that has to be done August to December in North Conway, so that would prevent us from possibly getting that job, is my thought.
I mean.
What were you saying?
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't.
Not a guarantee that we would get it, but if we do, that would push us.
So the concern is closing down the hill down over.
Yeah, the trouble is, the other, if, if the other entrance was a decent entrance, if you mind though, but it's not. It's, it's up over that steep hill and you can't see going either way.
What if we, I, I don't know, just the.
I guess there are out there, I mean.
Parking spots, but what if we those two spots as they come up? If we wouldn't use the parking spots, I don't know, to give better visual?
Yeah.
You'd lose two. You would lose two parking slots in a busy time, but maybe, I don't even know if that's something we can do.
That's, those are my concerns. It's nice to get it done, but, uh.
You definitely don't want it before the fourth.
No, no, I was figuring after the fourth, just because.
Is there any?
The peak four, we saw some of the last two weeks of July, the first two weeks.
How long does that work? How long is?
How long is that road going to be closed, I guess? It's a good question.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm really anticipating start to finish on getting this project done in three weeks or less.
Okay.
Cause that week, I mean, if, if they were to start the seventh, that week right after.
Yeah.
That tends to be.
Tends to be a quiet wait in the first week.
Right.
Is there enough, is there enough room to put in, uh, on that extra street coming out? Is there enough room to put like mobile traffic lights or something to make it like, I don't know if there's enough room to make another intersection over there.
Uh, not really.
It's pretty tight from the whole bed.
Okay.
The others, the other road is basically a, a one-way street down over.
That would need to.
I got you.
It's really a one-way street, but it's two-way. Honestly, it's, it's, it's not. It's not, you know, but I mean, day, we still sign agents, so.
It runs from August to
December.
December, so it would have to.
Yeah, but that other one's getting, it's bidding out uh, the end of next week, so we'd be able to find out.
So if we don't get it, we'll have more flexibility, I guess.
Yeah.
I was just, my concern of if we get it.
It's fair enough. That's fair, you know?
For sure.
Absolutely.
Cause I, I don't want to interfere, you know, with plugging up the whole, you know, that, cause I, that must be a public parking area.
The public parking here is really well used for that five, six weeks, because of swimming and everything.
It runs down there, but you're also going to be in the area of, I don't know, if you come around that corner, coming to the lights.
Yeah.
Um, that's going to be bumper to bumper too. You're going to be in.
I think, I think what they did, uh, when they give this, uh, the terrain thing, where they rerouted the traffic was a great idea.
Maybe we could.
They told me that they will leave the sign package because Bruce is going to go and redo the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I was told that I could reroute the traffic the same way up over that little hill and take all the traffic off of that street altogether between the intersection and the bridge.
Well, that makes sense, you know.
They'll allow dumb guys to do the same thing.
Yeah.
That'll help them get through off the main road quicker.
Yeah.
Before you could shut that down completely and run traffic around.
Cause running traffic around is going to slow it down for sure, but it won't.
It'll slow it down.
It won't be visual like stopping it and.
Track the trailers, get up around.
Might be safer.
Yeah, oh, no, I think it's very much safer, you know, guys, and then you don't have to worry about traffic control. You don't have to have flaggers out there or help the excavator and stuff.
But I think allow us to do that, that would be very.
You're probably looking at about a week, right? I would think to put the tapping valve sleeve in, come up over the hill and turn the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, so probably the road would be closed for a week.
All right.
More street.
That's not terrible.
That's up to that.
And if we started on that first week after the fourth, you said it's not as busy, maybe that would be ideal.
And I think, though, we'd have to come up with some signage, Mike, for those entrance and you know, I mean, something caution or some, I don't know. I just, I just know I've come up out of there and we're trying to get out on Main Street.
Way to. Is there a way to, to block off those two parking spots, kind of like the state's doing right now? I mean.
Being up on Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was two, would you kind of come up over if we could?
Put a couple of cones in there and they will build that.
Include just like a caution sign, entering traffic, entering traffic.
Or a caution or something. So we got that done.
For a week.
But, yeah, I reckon there needs to be one in front of Susan.
Right, just those two that you come up over and have a better visual of entering in, sitting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's higher as you go on north to drop down the, to see what's coming up the hill.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
We use the other side, you know, make one that comes down between the old Hilliards building, make one an entrance, one an exit. Is that feasible? No?
No, so you gotta cross paths with the bottom where you're staggering up the hill to turn to go where you're talking.
Oh, I, yeah, you're right.
Be tied on the bottom. I mean, you'd have to comb it. A lot of people don't know that.
Right. All right.
So if we say, uh, issue the notice to proceed dated July seventh, does that work for everybody?
Yeah. And that it's flexible.
Yeah.
Right now.
And it gives us time for the materials to come in.
Cause we get, uh, all the material, all the piping, valve fittings, everything's supposed to be in next Wednesday, okay?
You'll be able to stop that right in the parking down there.
We can, okay.
If anything else, I've got a shop for plenty of parking.
Okay.
All right, so forty-five days from July seventh, that is. Anything else?
Here, why don't you just follow me?
Sure.
Thanks, Lee.
People on S U A, these are really nice.
Okay, so there's three copies of the notice to proceed here. I need, um, or to sign all three copies and then we'll distribute them.
I'll take a motion for Cheryl to sign when we have.
I'll take a, I make a motion for Cheryl to sign. Green and on, how do you know?
Your second name?
Mm-hmm.
Your second.
And those and third then? The buy? One?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Guys. I'm for you.
Thank you.
Um, changes during construction. There's, there's two ways we can deal with changes. During construction, there's going to be, uh, you know, potentially field orders if things come up that are questions or, you know, you need a clarification or something, you can ask Mike. And if Mike needs, or you need to call me, feel free. If it doesn't affect time or money, typically, it's just a field order, you know, please do this, please do that. If it's a something that's going to affect, um, the contract amount, we need to issue a change order. It doesn't need to be, like, I don't want you to wait around while we work on the change order, but I want to know ahead of time if something's coming up that's going to be like earth-shattering so that we can deal with it. Um, I will prepare change orders if necessary that affect the contract price or the contract time, um, run them by the selectmen and then run them by you and then we'll execute them.
Yeah.
Yeah. There is a change order form in here. I'm sure, I'm sure you've seen the report. Um, safety on the job is entirely your responsibility. So, um, traffic is going to be an issue, obviously. So we want to make sure that, you know, some work has been put into that. You're coordinating with D O T for in one twelve and with the town within the parking lot here.
Yeah.
Okay. Shop drawings, um, send me some, who's your supplier for your plate material?
Arrow.
Can you have them or coordinate some shop drawing review for me? Just have, just send me a copy of the shops. Um, digital submittals are fine.
Okay.
Um, payments to the contractor on larger jobs, obviously, then we would have monthly pay estimates and, uh, probably progress meetings. In this particular case, I suspect, given the duration of the project, there will be one one pay requisition and one payment, unless you have, I mean, to do more than one, but you can use the form that direct documents.
Okay.
That's scheduled values and just send me that by email and I'll look it over and make sure it's okay and get the selectment authorized and the payments.
Yeah.
So monthly progress meetings, I'm not sure how you want to deal with that. Um, if they start on July seventh, they're going to be done you know, within forty-five days, so mid-August, they'll be finished. We don't necessarily need to have progress meetings unless you want to have them. I can just coordinate with Mike. It's really a board whether or not you want to get together and.
We can talk, we can talk about it every couple of weeks.
All right, so as of right now, we, we won't have progress meetings per se, but if something comes up and we need to, we can coordinate by email. Okay, so your supplier, the Arrow, for your plate materials?
Yeah.
What about the ledge finding down there, Mike? You think that's going to be an issue?
A little bit.
I just heard about when these guys are down there working on it, I heard them
The hammering.
Hammering away for two days.
Can we get to that on your other business?
Sure, okay.
That's fine. Um, as far as subcontractors?
What's that paving, right?
What's that paving, right?
Yeah, paving, uh, and then I don't know if you'd wanna, I don't know if you'd count the the traffic loop. Uh.
We have them for paving.
Repair, uh, I have a new site.
Yeah, we have a lot of them.
Uh. Lancaster.
They're an A B Z repair.
Yes, yeah.
And we talked to the police department here about traffic control.
If we need it.
And they said they would be, for them happy to help us out though.
Yeah, I don't think that's an if, I think that you you're gonna, yeah, and then it gets busy there and you're gonna be right in the middle of that intersection. So I think that traffic's gonna be a concern.
Can you let me know um what days you're gonna, you think you're going to need them ahead of time? I just need to make sure that I'm staffed for that.
Were you the guy I spoke to?
He called and spoke to the fire, the police chief. Yeah, so we've had some changes staffing, okay, so if you could just maybe, you know, give me a call.
Yeah, yeah.
I just need to make sure I have coverage and I will find coverage.
Okay. First case of unlocked, that was great. I've got a couple of guys, maybe public works could assist in that also. E D is a little short.
So we'll work it out, um, just give me some head, some heads up.
Yeah, we can, we can talk after this if you want. Yeah, I I just wanna make sure that the police department knows what they're getting themselves into. I mean, they gotta be there all day.
That's yes, so I need.
It's not like I'm gonna go and have coffee now. I mean, you know, something's gotta be there all the time because they're gonna be working out in the middle of the street.
I'll work, I'm, I'll reach out to other agencies if I need you. I will, I will find coverage.
But ultimately, it's the contractor's responsibility to provide the traffic control. So if the town's willing to help out, that's great. But um, I don't want the police department to not understand the commitment they're being asked to provide and. No, we can't do it because we can't have those guys working out in the street with no traffic control.
Yeah, it um.
No, I mean like when, when, I don't mean to cut anybody off, like whenever we do anything in Berlin and that involve being in the street, you know, we always try to give. You know, local versus outsourcing, so you know.
But we appreciate it, it just, I don't, I don't, I gotta make sure that it's.
No, no, if you're not staffed, that you know, that I'm, it's not a big deal, we'll find out the means.
Okay.
But.
We can talk about it.
Yeah.
We wanted to at least see when the starting date would be and then come back to the police department and say, okay, this is when we plan on starting. Cause we couldn't really give you dates until after we have the meeting. Um, so if you could, um, just call my office and okay, when you.
You have fun, you have a drive.
Yeah, it's Judy, it's straight.
Yeah, oh yeah, straight there, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Field offices, I don't plan to have one. Do you plan on setting up a trailer or anything? Just uh probably have a Conex for our fittings and then um uh porta potty down below. By our station here.
We actually have.
There's two.
Lot of porta potties that we.
I'm already downed.
Okay.
Okay, so if you can coordinate with Mike in terms of where to drop that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, construction schedule, we talked about uh traffic control, we talked about. Uh, ledge, I did put a ledge quantity in the bid form. Which I typically do, just in case we hit boulders and stuff. We didn't do any ledge probes and I didn't frankly anticipate ledge, but. Uh, reportedly it's there, you know, with D O T just put some new drainage in and ran into it. So Mike, maybe you can elaborate a little bit on where that was.
Um, they ran into it a couple places, but one isn't gonna affect you. The one it is at the top of the hill or dropped down. Um, they ran into some ledge, um, I can probably get someone that I will talk to to find out more. I couldn't be there, I had other stuff going on. I was there for a minute when I saw the excavator hammering. Um, but I can get more depth on that.
Okay, okay, so basically, we want six feet of cover over the water main. So that means you really gotta go down like eight feet. So there's gonna be a need to remove some ledge there, so I guess I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of it.
Yeah.
And plan ahead of time because it's not gonna be, it's gonna be, it's there. So I'm hoping that it's just on that knob and once we turn the corner, we'll be okay, but um certainly right on that. And you can see it, you know, you drive by now and it's like, oh yeah, that's why it's the way it is. It just drops down hard and it's cause it's brought there. So I don't know if you have the equipment, but you'll have to make arrangements to to have a hammer. I guess if you're in Berlin, you must have a hammer.
Oh, we we have access to a lot.
So uh, there is, there is a bid item in there. We may go over that bid item. I think I had twenty-five cubic yards. It is what it is, you know, construction, there's always surprises and there are never good surprises. So um, we do have the the means to deal with it. Um, it's paid for by the cubic yard. So we do have to measure that, so if I'm not available, Mike, you know, get it exposed and let's measure it up and and feel comfortable with quantity. So that when you submit your requisition, I'm not saying, no, that's not right.
Right.
So it's the trench width, three feet times the depth.
Yep.
Times the width, right.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? Um, we're assuming we're gonna hammer that, right? We're not gonna blast it.
Okay, no blast and you won't have that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, record documents, we would ask that, you know, you'll have a set. I'm gonna give you three set, I'm gonna give you two, I'm gonna give you three. Three sets of plans and specs. Um. Mark up on those, where the ties are, where the fittings are, take ties to building corners or something that's permanent. We can figure out where things are later on.
Yep.
Um, it's not unusual for D O T to request a copy when we're all done, so we wanna make sure that we've got something eligible that I can transfer for them.
Okay.
Cause once everything gets buried, you forget where it is and then Mike has to go find a service line or something and and where is it, I think. So it's nice to know that ahead of time. Alright, anything else that people want to discuss, any other issues, concerns? Good. Harrison, anything from D O one, D O T?
Between where our drainage and getting the permitted.
Can I fill a phone number for you? Cause I don't, I don't, it doesn't look like there's anything for you on here. Unless I missed it.
Oh, I don't have it. Here's a, um, I'm like.
Thank you. And this is how I can reach you or do I have to call and ask?
You can reach our office there. Um, and Matt's probably gonna be handling it.
Okay, so ask for Matt, what's his last name?
Kale.
That's it for sure.
Absolutely.
And you can scan the Q R code and get the permit site to apply.
Oh, fancy.
Alright, we're set soon.
Great, thank you Steve very much. We'll see more of you soon.
Alright, hey, nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Any questions, give me a ring.
Nice to meet you, Steve. I'll be the one calling you to ask you all my questions and.
No, no problem. Why don't you take two and I'll leave one for Mike. So it's three sets of plans. So you can have two. There you go, thank you, thank you.
And see if we can mark out the traffic. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Eric, we're gonna do a site visit if you want or something.
Yeah.
Whatever you want.
I think you can find like if you wanna.
You go down to me.
I think you're fine if you'd like to go.
Hey Mike, why, why don't you take a set of plans and specs, just say what happens.
You do, Steve will take care of it.
Did you need Mike to hear anything you were talking about?
Well, I was gonna mention the pavers, but I think he's aware of it. No, he's aware of it.
So, oh, the sidewalk pavers? Yes, he is aware.
And so I wasn't really asking for any specific approval during this, so I don't think that we.
Okay, so would it be okay if you caught up with him later then? Is that okay with you? I'm sorry. You know where to find him.
Do we wanna, do we wanna wait for Scott or do we wanna let Randy?
I would have Randy.
So.
Oh, that's going to. Uh, so my name is Randy Rutherford, I live up on Paradise Road and I wanted to share with you. Uh, a bit about uh an exciting organization that we just created. Um, called Enjoy Woodstock N H and the mission of it is 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 to enhance the experience of. Woodstock for visitors, for residents, uh, and for businesses. And so about a year ago, uh, we had a kickoff meeting where we started talking about the idea of. Of doing an organization like this and we've been having some informal conversations and just in the last. Uh, month or so, we've, we've achieved um the registration with the state for the organization. And our five oh one C three uh paperwork is in right now for uh being a charitable organization. Um, as I said, the mission, uh, the goal is is to enhance the experience and so we see a number of different ways of doing that. Uh, one is uh is to do a uh a set of pavers. Think of it kinda like the Hollywood Walk of Fame with the stars uh in this, in the sidewalk. These would be two by three foot granite pavers that are um. That are the, that represent the forty-eight, four thousand footers. I think that most of you know. Mostly you know uh about the four thousand footers, that there's forty-eight of them that are recognized in New Hampshire. And there's just literally thousands of people that are uh are tracking this list and are are trying to do those hikes and. And accomplish that and and we see that there's a potential for those individuals to. Either kick off their hike here or to stay here while doing their hikes or to to come by afterwards. And so that's why there's a particular draw to having things like these, these sidewalk pavers. Our uh vision is to have these forty-eight um on the sidewalks on Main Street. Think of it as kind of going from down around Five Main, uh, that restaurant, you know, that bridge down there. Up to probably in thirty-two uh kind of area and uh and in the sidewalks. Uh, I'm not formally asking for permission for this now, but I did wanna share the concept uh with you. And this is a, is an initial rendering of what we think one might look like. Um, of course, we're, we're still working to identify what the uh, how detailed the artwork can be and so on. But but the vision is, is that that we would have one for each of the peaks and that they would be sponsored. So on the bottom of this one, it says Enjoy Woodstock N H, which is of course our organization. But the um, the, the, the vision or the concept is, is that much like people do pavers and bricks and things like that. That these would be sponsored by different individuals or businesses of each of the forty-eight. Um, I think that it's probably a fundraising opportunity for this organization. I think that, you know, we, we understand the basics of the cost of the, of these pavers. We're still getting quotes or or info on the engraving, but I, I think that we'll have a good number of. Individuals or organizations that would like to to sponsor this and have their name uh on that. Um, my hope is, is that we can do this, do the initial work this summer. Fall and most likely the installs all next year, but when I say initial work, it's, you know, doing that fundraising, doing the promotion. And such like that. Um, let's see, and so, so I think that, that the, the draw of that is. Is that it will attract many of the uh of the, uh, much of the hiking community uh to Woodstock. And then uh I think dovetailing on that and hopefully building on that. Uh, I would like to see a festival uh for hikers up here. I think that there's a giant. Um, uh, a whole gap in New Hampshire uh for the hiking community. There isn't a, a hiking festival, right? There are craft festivals, beer festivals, every other kind of festival you could think of. And I think that the Woodstock can kinda lay claim to that because we have so many, uh, so much hiking and so much of the, many of the four thousand footers. Right here. Um, I have been very impressed with the uh, with the festivals that, that Judy and the festival committee. Have put on and and would like to emulate that or work with that committee in order to, to have a hiking festival. Uh, the basic idea is tents, you know, with, with different hiking related vendors. We know we have a good number both here in town as well as in the nearby area. And I think that, that this would be a, um, would be relatively easy to get participation from them. I also envision that it would be things like uh the White Mountain National Forest, Forest Service, A M C. Um, some of the hostels around Seoul Colony, you know, is kinda pivoting towards hikers and of course the Notch. Hostel and such like that. So I think that there, there would be a good amount of demand and I, I really believe that that would uh be. Uh, an exciting opportunity both for the, the local residents to have, to have another festival here as well as. Uh, bringing visitors in and establishing uh us as a, as a kind of a launchpad for the. Um, before, for hiking. Um. Let's see, oh, and during that we can, it, it, so also of course, it includes some artists and some music. We'll see how this would evolve. Um, and there's certainly a, I think, a relatively easy educational. Component of that, that there are organizations who are specifically trying to promote either hiker safety. Or uh promotes the, the hiking sport, uh, including uh a, a, there's our podcast. Uh, devoted to hiking here in New Hampshire that has done very well and is, is setting up multiple uh kind of little. Um, pub engagement kind of things and they have speakers come in. And we also have some, some authors, both in the area and in New Hampshire in general, that are writing hiking books and often like to, to give. You know, talks about it and and hosts book signings and, and tell their story. Um. Goal for this is sometime in twenty twenty-six. Um, I would hope that we could identify a time, uh, of course, when we aren't uh conflicting with other. Festivals or other things that we know that are, are going on, that are already going to, to bring a lot of individuals up here to the area. Uh, it, one idea is, is somewhere just after Labor Day, but before. Uh, before foliage and before the um. The Highland, uh, yeah, before the Highland Games. The uh, for those of you who try, kind of follow the, the hiker uh stuff, one of the. Uh, the Appalachian Trail hikers, they call it the, the bulge, they, you know, they kind of uh move as a, as a herd. So the earliest ones, you know, are coming through now or in the last few weeks. Uh, the, the bulge itself is about the middle of August, you know, for the next few weeks. So if we did it, if we did it after Labor Day, we'd probably just miss that bulge. Um, if we were to do it before, which there may be too many conflicts, we would, we would be able to include more of, of those hikers in there. Um, the organization I also see is, is being able to, to um promote and and pursue grants in order to help. Uh, help improve the community, improve, kinda Main Street is the focus, as I said. But we're not limiting it to just Main Street itself. Um, and at this point, really, the, the point of this is just to introduce the concept. Get any feedback, guidance and things like that, let you know that it's happening and uh and that we'll be coming back, asking in the future. You know, for, for permission for various projects as well as possibly for some funding uh in order to help improve uh downtown Woodstock. Uh, that's the pitch. Oh, I have one other thing, oh.
Well, I was just gonna say too, I think a, a lot of it is marketing too, that we'll have a Facebook page or people group, businesses can be involved with the town, the meatball. To, to kind of covered walk and Woodstock and, you know, restaurants and outside dining and all that stuff.
So we're doing kind of a soft rollout on this, as I said, we've been meeting for a little while, kinda kicking around ideas, trying to figure it out. Um, we're just now, you know, doing this, this public announcement. And what you see here is a draft flyer that uh that we're going to distribute along Main Street. In order to uh invite individuals to, to have a, a meeting to. To get ideas, start garnering support and such. Uh, this hasn't been published yet and as I said, it's not. To get ideas, start garnering support and such. Uh this hasn't been published yet and as I said, it's not not final. So I'd ask that it not. That that we don't push it out of uh uh on social media from there or anything like that. Any questions, feedback?
No, I love the concept. I think um probably before you start like selling them or moving along, certainly a conversation with Mike to. Be sure that this is an actual like possibility.
Mike and I, Mike and Chad and Bruce and. He he's not, he's not thrilled, but I think he's he's willing to go on, but as far as.
I guess you just need your approval of the board, not anything from us.
Yeah, no, and then and then.
Mike, Mike, Mike's okay with it, I think.
No, I think the only right place that I kind of throw up are like. When they're plowing, how is that gonna be affected? Like is the salt going to erode these if they break, if they chip? What's the replacement plan for? Just those type of things. It's the safety of, obviously, people walking on. Our sidewalks that are supposed to be meant for everybody soon.
You know, stuff's gonna grow around them, um as we see in our parks. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of maintenance that's gonna be have to be somebody else's responsibility, keeping them clean. Who's taking care of the weeds, you know, all of that stuff.
Care of the weeds in the park, I use Roundo.
They do, they go down, no, they go down with their pressure washer and stuff and. But um there's, you know, I just think there's a lot to be considered and then a lot to be considered. Like when there's a changeover in your board and your group.
Yeah.
Who's going to assure those things are taken care of in the future?
Yeah.
Because, you know, it just needs to be a thought, because we we know, just because we have the pavers, I think Steve could probably keep speak to it a little bit. Like in the parks, how much upkeep it is, you know, so it just needs, we just need to be mindful of that and it needs to be planned in place and who's going to do that, because. We're not staffed to quite honestly, so.
There's pavers at Cascade Park now.
Yeah.
On the upper level?
Upper and lower and in Soulja's Park.
Is it not in the sidewalk?
No, not the sidewalk.
No, 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 they're all on the side.
I Mike and uh, you know, Bruce does all the granite work on all the um.
Right.
On all the sidewalks and stuff like that. You know, on the curvings and things like that. He and Mike have talked quite a bit about it.
Yeah, so may maybe we you guys need to get with, but ultimately it needs to be a vote of the board, you know.
Well, and I mean, I think as we always try to do is we listen to our department heads, go by the advice and. Guidance of them sometimes too, as far as if this is.
You guys have a a plan for maintenance and care and is that or is that what this meeting is about?
That would be part of that meeting.
You know, like what is the?
Yeah, well, hopefully we'll have enough money to, you know, probably from the sales to be able to.
Are you gonna wait until you have enough money to do all forty eight of them to make sure you do before you start truckling them down or?
I don't think so. I think the idea was we probably do a few. You don't wanna do the whole album in one year anyway.
No, but what if you start and you only get enough for two? And then we have two pavers and then there's not another forty eight. And I'm not being, I'm not being negative, I'm just saying, why we don't.
I I believe I believe that we uh will have enough.
I mean, that's a possibility, but I don't think it's.
You know, just, you know, I just wonder.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it needs to be a plan and a plan in place that. Okay, Scott and Randy have sponsored two and they go in, but then there's no more.
I think we're hoping for this meeting that approval and concept.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
So I if we can have emotionally have approval and concept.
Why don't you guys get a concept and then come back for approval? You know, like what's your maintenance plan? What's? What's the like rollout plan? What's the, because it's hard to do that without.
Honestly, that sounds like, or if a plan, not a concept though. What you just asked for was a plan for this, a plan for this, and a plan for this, and that's not a concept.
Well, I I mean, how do you adopt a concept if you don't know what, there's a lot of moving parts here. I I don't know, I.
I think we could say that we'd like the idea, but we need to see more of a plan, like how it's. I think that's a fair.
That's fair, that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I particularly like the festival ideas, especially.
I think the festival.
Let's ask Steve.
I I think this is just not early enough, you know, advertising.
This group is just not hard on the favors. And we're not retiring the others.
I I think it has. I also. Might do this before we do.
What's that?
North Town, right, I think, I uh very openly, um I think that. That through this, we're trying to lay claim to the four thousand footers. I really believe that North Conway could very easily. And and possibly you legitimately have a better point. Uh and and more infrastructure and organization to be able to put that through, so.
So you want me to quote that?
Have you ensured an alternate theme? Other than four foot, four thousand footers?
Not really, and for the I for the festival, I was. My my concept, and this is really me thinking a lot, and in the small team. Um we haven't had the benefit of of a lot of other inputs, but I've been thinking along the lines of hiking. And then expanding into outdoor activities, so whether it's the kayak and the water and everything else. Uh that the 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 paver project is specifically starting with four thousand footers. You could very easily say, well, we're gonna do after we're successful with this. Artist Bluff and uh the Bomber Site and, you know, there's there's a bunch of other. Super well-known attraction, uh you know, uh.
That's also involved natural forest and stuff like that, so probably more involved.
Oh, uh I'm I'm sorry, wasn't saying put something up there, instead I was saying that it does not.
No.
No, he's saying add those mountains to the pavers that are going, like add more havers, but.
I would.
Okay.
This will be Woodstock.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I just got a question on the pavers. Is there not something else you could do instead of the paper from? Years of experience working on sidewalks, I mean, you start putting holes in them, something's gonna go bad. I mean, professionally, if anybody somebody has a re, how they conceal it. Is it definitely anytime you put a hole in sidewalk, you put a chunk of cement in it? The ground moves up here in the. Liturgy, but then you got eleven foot plow with a loader running over the top of them, which doesn't take much to pop them things out.
Yeah, but.
I mean, I've never pulled one in, so I don't know how they go in, but I do know you're gonna have to put a hole in a sidewalk and. Anytime you put a hole in a sidewalk up here in North Country, you're gonna have a problem. Is there something else you could use instead of a paper? I mean. I don't know what signs or something, I mean.
Yeah, we considered plaques and in uh found. Where I would believe that that was going to overlap with the other ones that that are probably coming down the pipe, not through us. Historical plaques.
What, oh, like, um where would you put plaques?
Yeah, the only place would be on buildings or pedestal.
You know, it certainly requires some maintenance and stuff like that. Or if somebody, instead of just some Joe blow, cut a hole in the sidewalk, you have to make sure that. But. Oh, no, you're still gonna have the problem. It could, I there'll be certainly issues going down the road. Well, just something, uh so I just want to ask you another way, other than, because the way you're talking, there's gonna be a lot of holes. Up through the sidewalks. Unless they come up with another plaque or something, I mean, another paper.
Another concept.
Another organization, now that's a is opening a door for another one to come in and say, well, geez, we wanna put. Pavers in your sidewalk too, well.
We've actually already kind of had that, but somebody wanted to put puppy feet on it.
What about in, what would it be, what would be the impact if you engraved into the pavement if you can't do that?
It'll blow glass.
It won't, okay.
Uh and.
Maybe the possibility should try like four or five the first year and see how they.
On an old section of sidewalk.
And that wouldn't lie, that wouldn't be a bad idea, because if it don't hold up, then you you can cut the pavement and patch it. You're gonna have to overlay the whole thing before you're done, but like I said, if we put forty eight holes up, I would make sure. They're gonna hold up. I mean, I think it's a neat idea and I know Hollywood has them, but Hollywood doesn't place.
Right, that's us, we're not, is the sand and winter stone.
And have sidewalks do move with the grass.
And the safety of people walking on.
I agree, yeah. Uh and so so that makes sense to to investigate that and we do have. Uh as Scott had mentioned, Bruce engaged, which he's had experience with.
He does this stuff all of his thing, no? All right, Bruce is good, I trust his word, and I I do.
One other thing, and I and again, not specifically asking, we we're so, you know, at the conceptual stage, but. I would envision, I would hope that we can have some kind of a of a promotional sign. And both for getting this paver project going and um uh and perhaps an informational sign. In the future, and so we may be asking for permission for that.
Who owns that fence?
You'd have to talk to Skip.
That are the ones between Landmark and Brooks.
Right, or Landmark and Brooks or Merlin or both of them actually would be great places.
Right, I think, yeah, I think we would.
We could do them on our town buildings, you know, we can hang up the signage on our town like. We do for others, but we don't allow signage um on town property for any, not even the the Lincoln Friends of Library, they take them down. Just because if you start sign pressing it, it happens. Um so we, Skip is very gracious about allowing signage. There. And David or work, I think, will probably allow you on that street there. And where's the other place? Um.
They used to, didn't there used to be a little kiosk by the Carriage Hotel?
Yes, Carriage Motel has the kiosk in thirty two.
Okay.
But we'll, we can, you know, put posters up in here and stuff, we just can't, but it's not.
And Facebook.
And Face- Facebook's gonna be your biggest, but that's a lot of people will go to, and Mike has Skip's phone number, so.
All right, so I'll check in with Mike over the next couple of days. All right, any, well, let's see, so earlier, there was a a a conversation about about. Coming back, but is there any kind of a approving this as an idea or or are we too early for that?
I think we're too, I think we could say the concept is nice, but I think we need to see, yeah, we have to kind of. See all those other details and kind of what we want to say. Yeah.
But you know, I'll talk with Steve because he's gonna know.
Yep.
Or I'll talk to that.
I think that's a fair conversation with the engineer, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll.
He might have some other communities across New England or whatever that he might be that have done something similar that we could talk to that.
Should have kept it.
Similar way, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I will definitely ask him and ask him to put his pillars out, like we do. Horizons is huge, um and they do a lot of work in Conway too. Actually, I won't know, but I'm saying that they would know if people have done.
Yeah.
Um I will tell what your plan is.
Uh well, I and actually, my my concern on the Conway side is more on the festival, right? I think, yeah.
Keep all of that, um just pass it to the concept, I'll show it, I'll scan these in and ask for his advice.
Okay, and and I'd like to spend some time with you on festival.
I'll help you out. I would love to help you out.
And I think part of the group.
I think the festival is certainly something that could be, yeah.
I think part of the groups.
Let's get together.
Part of the group's efforts to help you support you with the Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to to support all those things.
I'll definitely help you with that, you know, that side of it too. I mean, just give me an email or.
Thank you. All right, uh if it's not too rude, I'm going to to depart now.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it. No, that's amazing.
And we want to.
Let's just finish.
Go right through.
Approve, let's approve the minutes from May twentieth.
Um you got those.
Yeah, I feel, yes.
So you're gonna.
Okay, second, okay. All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye, okay.
I'll get confused.
And then, um do we wanna just table the apparel? Can we table the apparel things?
Been waiting, um. Just real quick, this gentleman came back, it's about the apparel, um he came back again, he wanted, he asked me if I would have you guys reconsider. Um they come through three times a week, they're never overflowing. Um the areas that have these in their towns, he sent more information, apparently they outfit like twenty. Families within that community that allows them. Um they can't find a place here, and so he asked if he would at least um for me to bring it back. If it was my felt it could fit, um and ask you guys to reconsider and give them a shot. So.
I need a question, I'll see if it's gonna provide. Go over to people in us, in the immediate area, how do they distribute that?
I'm I'm not, not sure on that, I didn't really get him, I just know that they they support the people in their area, providing clothing for veterans and families.
They must have a list that they were talking about.
I'm not, I I'm not sure, I didn't get into all those.
That's just a, that's just a question.
We've got one at the John, we've got.
Oh, um he, they are at the solid waste facility, he told me that, they are, because I I said, I.
Yeah, this one there.
I had said to them.
Plan and aid is gone.
Plan and aid, yeah, that's.
And so this is the.
He suggested we reach out to them and I said, well, that we we share that with them, but they're really looking to get into Woodstock, they can't find a place. So.
I would not be in favor of the shed.
No, no.
But that little three by three thing.
Yeah, that would be, you're stuck up in front of the building.
And I I expressed all your concerns, you know, and they they said they're through this area, they make their loops and then they would make sure they stop by.
They can go on a trial basis for a couple of months and see how it goes.
I mean, I have the same concerns as you, but I don't mind trying it.
Yeah.
If it means it benefits families around the community.
Yep.
If Mike feels like this can fit and not be an eyesore, I I haven't checked with Mike either yet, so.
We can maybe, maybe uh make a motion to try it on a three-month basis, the small one.
It's a, yeah, if you would like.
Yeah, where would you put it? It'd be right on fire, that's below.
Maybe, maybe we can move it down, move the stuff down. I don't know.
It might, it might make a fit.
If Mike makes it fit and look good.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm interested.
Put it in that last parking spot where the emergency vehicle usually sits.
Along the side?
Yeah, move the emergency vehicle over us parking spot and put it there.
You won't want it there in the winter, if I if I just turn it under our thing, um I don't know, I will work out the logistics if you wear it a little bit.
Right.
If you're not these big shed though, I don't.
No, no, we'll do a three by three bin and give it a try.
The other thing might be, will they dump other stuff from that?
No, I know, that's my, that's sort of three-month trial, that's what I.
You know, well, I'm talking like our bills and stuff, like I think the.
Oh.
This is only clothing, shoes and accessories on.
That's true. I'm willing to give it a try if you guys are okay with it.
Yep.
Um if it if it benefits our families.
Yeah, yep. No, we could make a motion to.
They have a brand new municipal program that that um designed for towns where every location. Uh we provide twenty kids with full wardrobes every year. I'm not sure how that's determined, but maybe it's between the welfare office and maybe the bridge project or something. Or the school, put it right for the school.
That would be, actually, if you're a bridge partner, that would be a good reference. If they uh if they've already worked with them.
So, but you don't want a motion to consider that and allow it or?
I think, uh was it a motion to uh allow it for three months as long as we can be fit properly.
Also, I don't know. All those in favor?
Um quickly, the town of Lincoln would like to know if you can meet earlier than five on the thirtieth, um maybe I can have you guys come in at four thirty.
Sure.
So if you're okay with that, I will let Jane know.
Sure.
You're all okay? Yeah?
No.
Okay.
I'd rather come in at four thirty, yeah, better, I think.
I didn't want, sometimes you guys would be like, sure, I'll leave you guys. All right, so you got that?
Yeah, yeah.
Um and then, New Hampshire D E S uh contacted us. And they are um actually using us as a case study for all the NNG improvements that we've implemented.
Right.
And they have nominated us for the New England Energy Award.
Right, that's awesome.
So.
Very cool, very cool.
As to.
Will they have an official cross release that we can share out to our?
If we win, I'm I would assume so.
But you already, you already put on Facebook that we're nominating today.
No.
We should put it on Facebook, yeah, that we're nominating.
Um.
Yep.
I just thought, you know, Scott and Mike have worked really hard down there, so. Um and that's really all. Um and that's really all. The other business that I had follow up with you guys on, I think, unless you guys have stuff.
Yeah, no, I understand.
This would be advertisements going on.
No. Yeah, I'll make a motion then to go into non-public under RSA ninety one A. Colon three, numeral two, A, B and C. Do I have a second?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? All right, and we will logically not come back into public session. So, thanks, Steve.
And I gotta go do something, even if it's wrong, that's right.